Mr. Speaker.
Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the mayor, Steve Marantz. Councilwoman.
Well, hello and welcome all. And before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrumbina people as the traditional and original custodians of the land which we meet. And I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tassawangian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council's special meeting of Monday, the 24th of June, 2024. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube. And what is said in this meeting is not protected by a privilege. And there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item two, apologies. councillor Beth Warren has a leave of absence, otherwise we have a full house. Item three, declarations of interest of councillors or close associates. Are there any declarations from councillors? Being none. Before we move on to item number four, I would just like to mention an urgent item. And I'd like to introduce a procedural motion for introduction of an urgent item to update council's list of fees and charges adopted at the last meeting. And this motion will require an absolute majority. I'm proposing this item becomes item five. And the motion is that pursuant to the provisions of Regulation eight of the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations 2015, the council gives leave of the meeting to consider an urgent item to update the list of fees and charges. I'll call for a mover, please. Thank you councillor Walker. Second, councillor Chong. Being a procedural motion, I put the motion, all those in favour. Thank you. Those against? And that's an absolute majority. Thank you. Item now, item number four, rates and charges financial year 2024-2025. Call for a mover, second. Thank you councillor Hume. A seconder? Thank you councillor Kennedy. Councillor Hume, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke fairly extensively about the rates at the last meeting. And one of the points that I made in that meeting was that, yes, you know, rates are a cost of living expense. And yes, they are increasing. One of the principles that I always look at when it comes to setting the rates is we need the funding to be able to cover the budget. And in setting the budget, we look at, you know, what sort of expenses are maybe nice to have, but not necessarily necessary or essential. And, you know, we go through the budget carefully, which we did through a series of, you know, very long workshops. And we also looked at, you know, where are we at a position where we can't cut any further before we start getting into some services that are either essential to council, to meet its obligations to our residents and ratepayers, or things that we believe that the residents and ratepayers really appreciate and rely on, and would be happy to, you know, pay those rates for. I just wanted to go through a few of the costs that we are facing. So there is an increased depreciation of about 450k. And that's, you know, we're in a growing city, and we're funding new and modern infrastructure, new staff positions. We did go through the proposed staff positions and look at, you know, what is necessary and what isn't. Of course, there's the enterprise bargaining salary increases, which is not something that we can avoid. The elector poll, of course. For some of the new positions, there is increased office space. We're looking at about $250,000 to provide for that. The Clarence Community Facility Strategy, which is a very important strategy. And we've also got increased costs in terms of software, information communications technology, security, which is very important for ICT. So as a city, we are facing a number of increased costs. And, you know, part of that's to do with providing essential services, part of that's to do with being able to meet the challenges of a growing city. And I am very much believe that the rates increase that we landed on was absolutely necessary. I will say, however, that, and this is a point that I, because I ran out of time last meeting, didn't get the opportunity to make. When you're looking at setting the rates, it's not a simple debate about, you know, which services to retain, or what can we cut to keep rates more affordable. There is a third way, and something that, you know, we can look at as a council in the longer term. And that's looking at economic development. When we invest in economic development, we can increase the rate, the commercial rate base, which allows us to provide more services for our residents without putting more pressure on rates, our rating effort. And that's why I've been very consistent, or it's one of the reasons why I've been very consistent in supporting a lot of the major projects that have come before us, such as Rosney Hill, Kangaroo Bay Wharf site, Kangaroo Bay Boulevard site, and also the High Performance Centre. Now, I do stress that one of the reasons, because I believe these projects have a number of other merits that are unique to them. But let's consider that these projects, they bring in money through the lease or sale of land. They can bring in further money through rates. They can direct private money to the maintenance of sites that the ratepayers were previously maintaining. And they can also deliver amenities for the use of the public. And all of the projects that I mentioned, I believe, deliver most or all of these benefits. So I just think that's something, when we're talking about trying to put downward pressure on rates, without trying, without reducing essential services for residents and ratepayers, that that's something we need to recognise when we are considering those projects. It's one consideration, it's not the only consideration, but I think it's certainly an important one. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume. Councillor Kennedy?
It covered comprehensively by the mover. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder? You didn't move then?
One always feels like one's being dragged to one's feet.
Thank you councillor Mulder.
Shanghaied and placed in the thing. I mean, normally I like to hear what other people's contributions are, so that I can reflect on those as well. However, having been Shanghaied, we are now setting the rates. This is a modest rate rise comparable to other similar sized councils. And I don't mean Hobart, I don't mean Lonserton, I mean places like Devonport, Burney, Glenorkie, Kingston, those medium sized cities who aren't capitals and therefore don't have that huge commercial rate base, which is what sustains them. Now, our rate rise is, and those councils, many of those comparable councils, have actually got higher rate rises than us, but they are in the basis of they are actually in deficit, something this council has seriously avoided for a long time. And I was most interested to see one of the colleagues, who I was hoping would speak first, at the last meeting, had switched his tune. Because three or four years ago, or two, three years ago, there was a lot of talk about, interest rates are low, we should be borrowing, this is the time to invest, and this is the time to borrow money for future investments. Well, those words are coming back to thing. But the tune now is, no, we should avoid deficit budgeting at all costs. And so it's good to see that the reality of the world is starting to impact upon some people. Now, we have an aspirational capital works programme. And the fact is that in our discussions, it's been revealed that the current rate rise does not factor in the funding for those aspirational projects that are going to be coming online next year, the year after, and the year after that. There are some heavy capital borrowings are going to be required to fund them. And those interest payments will have to be funded eventually through the rates. So my concern is that although this is looking good, we are on the cusp of something here, which if we don't carefully manage it, we will be not sitting here gloating about how we somehow or other doing better than other councils. There is no magic pudding in the capital works programme. Sooner or later, the money for those capital works has to come out of the rates. It's not a magic pudding. And when that happens, the rates will have to rise. And I'm of the understanding that next year, it's likely to be, as things start to come on, in the order of eight to nine percent, and probably going ahead further than that. But it's the operating budget that I'm concerned about. Although our staff are increasing, I've been talking to some of the crews, and I haven't been giving them instructions, I've just been listening to them. Some of them are getting concerned because our day labour force is gradually getting worked more and more and more, as more parks come online, as more public open spaces come online, and those sorts of issues are starting to arise. Does anyone who walks down some of our major thoroughfares think that their footpaths, and I'll take Clarence Street as just but one example, that those footpaths are adequate and appropriate for a city that claims to be on the leading edge of service provisions and providing stuff? It's some of those basics that we really need to get back to before we start talking about our aspirational projects and getting our stuff right. And if that means we have to increase our day labour force, so be it. Because heaven knows, we've been increasing our management levels considerably for many years now. And although those policy advisors and those managers have important roles, in the end, unless we go out to full contraction, and that will cost us even more, we are going to have to get on top of the fact of the fact that we should be able to rebuild our existing footpaths and bring our city up to the standard that we all deserve. We can talk about a world leading city, and what's the point? If the little old ladies can't use their walking frames over the footpaths, if they're continually complaining to us about not being able to walk up to the supermarket, you know, those are the things that are the lifestyle issues. Those are the things that are important to the people in this city, not the great big aspirational programmes.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tried to summarise my comments on a, almost a postage card size. And that's not to reflect my concern about the increase in the rates. And it was also mentioned early in the piece, this is not a modest rate rise by one of our speakers. In fact, it's almost double the local government Hobart index, which was set at 3.7%. So council, this council has decided to almost double that and pass on that to the ratepayers of Clarence. Also, it was said, rates are a cost of living expense. And that was mentioned a couple of minutes ago as well. It certainly is a cost of living expense. And if you just take a little bit of time out and go and sit in the, or go through the Coles or Eastlands, and you can see people with baskets of goods now, whereas before, you used to see trolleys, and people are just grabbing what they can afford, basically to make ends meet. And it's going across every area, including all utilities, and the cost of living is increasing. I attended every workshop in the budget process here, over the many months that we ran them. And I suggested right in the beginning, that we should be looking at between 4.9% or five at the outset. And I said that because we have to allow for some increase. But then it was going on and on and on. And then we basically had this put to us, that these are the projects, these are what we have to obviously pay to keep this place going. And I suggested that by achieving that 4.9% or 5% increase, then we could have had a savings of between 1.8 and 2 million, which was a very modest reduction in the 6.3% that had now finally been proposed. And so it was disappointing during the course of the debate. And as I said, I attended every workshop and put in two pages of submission to try to bring that down to 4.9%. But it just didn't seem to be what I thought budget processes are about. And over the years, the budget process is the most important function of elected representatives in any council. Because during that course of those discussions, we have ownership of it. We determine what is going to be the rate increase. And I felt that during the process, that we were given a lot of information by the staff. And when I tried, or when I think a number of us tried, to try to reduce that, then there was a tinkering around the edges, and a modest little change here and there of 4,000 and 5,000, rather than the 15,000 or 25,000 for a number of these projects. And it just wasn't taken on board. I think we lost ownership of this budget process. And it's unfortunate, because as I said, it's the opportunity where we have ownership of it, and we can work together, and it didn't appear that way, in my opinion, to bring that rate increase down. So I will not be supporting the budget process, nor will I be supporting the rates, the fees and charges. And the reason why I didn't support the procedural motion was that we should have got that right in the first place. And now we're doing a little bit of tinkering around the edges to fix that couple of errors that occurred in that fees and charges when it came to us last week, three weeks ago. So my message to the community is that I will not support this budget. I believe it's too much. It's going to put too much burden on the ratepayers of Clarence. And I think a more modest increase would have been acceptable. And therefore, I will not be supporting the recommendation for the chair.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you. So here we are, round two. And I guess when it comes to the economy, the economy, if you're Clarence council, is great. We can just put up rate rise and we get it. So our economy is fine, Jack. For the ratepayers, eh, not so much. As I mentioned last time, the per capita recession, which effectively is a pay packet recession. Every fortnight, as residents' pay packets come to them, their pay packets are effectively shrinking. Their purchasing power is decreasing, their costs are increasing. And so we were going to have to have a rate rise. That's fine. That was always something we were going to have to do. But in such a challenging time, we had an obligation to actually try. We had an obligation to actually try. We had an obligation to show some restraint. And if you think the community development budget going up 15% is restraint, good luck to you. If you think the city culture going up 25% is restraint, boy, howdy, I'd hate to see what no restraint looks like. That is what we do. We just haven't tried. We haven't tried. Last budget, last year, we had the art mobile. This time, for struggling ratepayers, we'll be able to use that. And we're funding it to tens of thousands to go out into communities. And maybe if they can't afford bread, we'll be able to give them some slam poetry or some interpretive dance. That'll really help households that are doing it tough. There was mention of, you know, growth and economic growth. Well, you know, the business settings have to be good for that to happen. And I do think that when we're looking at that, you know, the funding can be private or it can be public. We're about to have an elector poll on public funded infrastructure, borrowed money. But this council, in its wisdom, decided that privately funded infrastructure around Kangaroo Bay, to over 50 million in development, that was no good. We couldn't have that. So bear that in mind. And yet, I did think that several years ago, we should have been borrowing for infrastructure. It's right to, if you like, run the OpEx, you know, balanced. But we should have been borrowing back then, because we could have got better builds for less. The cost of inflation in construction, in infrastructure is going right up. And the Albanese government defunded the police on building sites, when they abolished the Australian Building and Construction Commission. So good luck trying to get projects done on time. Good luck if the threats made by beloved former ALP donor John Setka comes through with what he's planning to do with AFL sites as they're built. I would now like to just ask a question through you, Mayor. One of the fundamental tenets for me has been that when we move to capital value, that having that 20% fixed charge was a fairness and moderating element. I'd like to have it spelt out, what percentage the fixed charge now represents in the rates?
Thank you councillor Walker. Ms. Morrell, please.
Right. So we're trending downwards. That's a pity, because I think that should have been a flat line. It should have probably been closer to 25 or 30 when we started. But there we go. As I said, these are really challenging times, and yet we have sections of our budget with double digit growth. We could have done so much better, and we really should have.
Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Darko, thank you.
One thing that we all aim to do when we're here in this place is, we want to make life better for the people of Clarence, right? And the capital works projects that we're aspiring towards are trying to make that outcome happen. It's building towards, building quality of life, economic development, as mentioned. But that includes things like improving the streets, getting the streets planted with trees, with bike lanes, and all of that kind of stuff that is a modern city, which is what the people of Clarence deserve. And the cost of living is really complex. But one thing we can do is spend money on our city, which actually helps reduce cost of living in the day to day for people. So it's not just the, oh, this is an extra six bucks a quarter on their rates. It's, oh, every month, they're $1 less on their petrol because they've got this service nearby to their house. And we can actually improve on cost of living through that avenue. Important to my heart is arts and culture. And those provide immense mental health and community wellbeing benefits. The return on investment there is effectively priceless. We get so much more than we spend by helping build community and improve mental health. It's preventative of antisocial behaviour and will aid in reducing negative health outcomes. So again, helping on cost of living, helping on the overall budget. And the residents of Clarence deserve better than cutting and slashing, and then hoping that austerity will magically build growth, because it doesn't. They shouldn't have to drive to Hobart for their needs and be relegated to a suburb, satellite city. By moving forward on the plans that we've made, we can deliver something better for them.
Thank you councillor Darko. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually hadn't planned to speak this evening, because I think at the last council meeting, many of us had made our contributions in relation to the council budget. But I have been inspired by some of the comments here this evening, just to put forward perhaps maybe a broader view about budgeting and striking budgets, and the fact that they're never perfect. So I think any of us could get up here and talk about something we didn't get, something else we would have liked to see. The fact that if we could possibly have a magic pudding where we didn't ever have to raise rates, that would be fantastic. But that's not the world that we live in. I think councillor Darko has just given a very well rounded contribution in terms of the way that we might see rates from an individual perspective, but also from a broader perspective, because that is what we need to take into account. And I recall, if I'm quoting correctly, councillor Chong at the last council meeting spoke about this, which is that we are looking at striking a budget from an overall perspective. And it's really important to remember that whenever we're thinking about the type of job that we've been able to achieve. I don't think it's fair to say that we, as individual councillors, or as a collective, lost control of the budget. Because in fact, it's in the hands of all of us as a collective. So we might say individual people didn't get what they might have liked to see. And I think we could all say that to either a small degree or a greater degree. That's what happens. Opposing a budget is quite a significant thing to do at any level of government. This is the operational instrument that's critical for us to get on and do the work that we need to do. So my view is, whether you did or didn't get exactly what you wanted, you know, it doesn't really merit opposing what is, quite rightly, the key instrument that you need to endorse every year. So I would encourage colleagues to actually consider how well this budget has actually been put together, and the good things that will come out of it. You know, what sports ground should we not maintain? What new playground should we not consider building? You know, all of those sorts of things come into mind when you talk about austerity, all of those sorts of things. So I think it actually has been a well struck budget. I think that it will continue to hold council in good stead into the future. Always though, being aware of the sorts of rocky times that we may continue to face in the years to come. So I think it is a good budget. Once again, congratulate all of our staff and councillors on the work that they've done in getting us to this point. And I support the motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Hume, your right of reply, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank all colleagues for their contributions. I'll just respond to a couple of them. Councillor James, yes, the rates increase is higher than the council cost index. But I think it's also worth looking at, when you're considering these things, the cumulative effect of rates increases over time. Last year, my understanding was we actually went below the index. So that's worth remembering. Now, it's all well and good to pick an arbitrary figure and say, hey, that should be the increase. But if you're going to pick that arbitrary figure, then, you know, what is exactly going to cut from the budget? And, you know, councillor James mentioned, I think it was about $2 million that we may have had to cut to achieve that saving. But I haven't heard any
have had to cut to achieve that saving, but I haven't heard any suggestions from him about exactly what those, you know, what those savings should be. Councillor Walker mentioned the mobile exhibition space. One of the things we understood through the budget process was that that asset had already been purchased, so without the recurrent funding to make it operational, it would have just sat idle. I am in furious agreement with him on Kangaroo Bay, but in regards to public money going to the High Performance Centre, we don't have a say in whether that gets built, but given it's going to be built with that state government, public money, we might as well ensure that the investment goes into our city and that we get the benefits for our residents. I often have, when it comes to this whole debate, when residents and rate payers talk to me about the issues confronting them, they often talk to me about the quality of services they would like to see, things that they really value in our city that we provide, things that they would like to see improved. But I honestly, I very rarely hear residents and rate payers come to me to talk about the level of their rates. Most residents and rate payers in Clarence are pretty happy with the level of their rates and would like to see extra investment, to see certain services, certain activities happen. So I'm approached by, others may have a different experience, other councillors around the table, but I'm generally approached by more people saying, I love this council service, you know, I love, I love the Jazz Festival, or I love, you know, what you've done with this space, or I would like to see more of this or that, but very little about, oh, my rates are absolutely killing me. And this increase, as I mentioned in the last meeting, it works out to something like a cup of coffee a week or a cup of coffee a fortnight. I can't remember which exactly, but it is a modest increase. I agree with councillor Mulder on that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hugh. Well, I'll now put the motion, which is the recommendation for the rates and charges financial year 2024, 2025. All those in favour? Against? So carry. Moving now on to item number five, which is the urgent item, which is the updated fees and charges 2024, 2025. Thank you councillor Chong. Call for a second, councillor Walker, thank you. Councillor Chong.
Just very briefly, it's a correct administrative oversight error last time. Seems very simple.
Thank you councillor Chong. Councillor Walker?
What councillor Chong said, and the simple fact of the matter is that I think this benchmarks well against neighbouring councils, so taking that all into the mix, I think it should be, continue to be supported, and I'd ask those that may not wish to support it, what they think the ramifications of that might be as well, as far as the anomaly we're trying to correct.
Thank you very much. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Deputy?
Absolutely.
Councillor James?
Yes, I'll be brief. I'll be brief. The initial proposed fee that we did discuss during the workshop was 3%, and then I believe what came out of the rates and charges at over 6% was adjusted across to the fees and charges. So it went from 3% to 6. And if we just look at one of these items here, sports ground, council land, special event, match promotion, state, national, international, junior, excluding lights, at the 3%, it was $502.20. Then by the wave of a magic wand, the 6% came in halfway through the discussion, and that now has increased from the $502.20 to $517, and fees do not include lighting. So that's just one aspect of where our sports ground, where we're trying to encourage people to obviously get out there and maintain a certain level of fitness, have in fact, you know, they've been sort of penalised by an increase of 6% on what I believe is one of those important events where we're trying to encourage people to take up sport.
Point of order?
That's my comments, and that's...
Thank you councillor Mulder, I think it's fairly, thank you.
Well, I'll now rise to speak, Mr Mayor. We're here talking about...
Councillor Mulder, you have the call.
Thank you. We're here to talk about an anomaly in relation to the plumbing fees, as I get it, for multiple dwellings. Have I got that one wrong?
That's right. Correct amount for residential plumbing approval, multiple dwelling.
So 6% and anything else like that is actually outside the remit of the relevance of this particular debate. Might I say though, that in terms of this adjustment of the fees, I find that it's a huge impost upon those battling developers who are having trouble filling their supermarket trolleys.
Thank you councillor Mulder, and might I just point out that if you had have risen earlier in the debate with that point of order, it would have been upheld. But thank you for your contributions always. So I do, as the mover of this recommendation, the second of both contributors, councillor Mulder has just pointed out as well, this is just correcting an amount that wasn't correct with the fees and charges that we approved last week. This is just to correct that oversight. So are there any other colleagues wishing to speak to this motion? If there are none, I'll go to the mover for the right of reply.
I seek my public support in amending this error.
Thank you councillor Chong. I'll put the motion then. All those in favour? Those against? So carry. Well, that now concludes the formal part of this meeting. Thank you for those members, the public who have joined us via live stream this evening, and thank you to colleagues and council officers for your attendance and contributions this evening. Thank you particularly to CFO, Ms Merrill, for all the work that you and your team have done, and to the CEO. It's been a mammoth effort, we've got there, and put your feet up for a couple of weeks, we're back into it again for next year. But thank you all, have a lovely evening, good night.